Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 12th, 2025 New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. I'm going to ask our Redevelopment Commission Executive Director, Mr. Zeb Huff, if he would come deliver us an opening prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather in your name to handle the city's business. We ask that you give us wisdom and guidance as we go about the agenda. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so. We pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal? Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Okay, Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes you'd like to make? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Set an meeting, Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next is request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk. So, the public is aware, it's like we have just one, the timer is not working out there, but it's working here. So, Ms. Barbara Sampson, you can come forward, and I'll let you know when your time is up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, let me give honor to God. My main purpose of coming up here is so that we could try to get a permanent bathroom in Henderson Park. I know we already got the Captain Betts, the beds on Shaw walking trail and fitness area. And I know we have the, we have the porta potters outside, out there. The porta potters all right for the ones that playing ball on the cement, but we need something like where they have some kind of activities in the field. We need to have a permanent restroom, properly, a men and women restroom. And I know you're saying that people might go in there and tear it up or do this, but solution to that is, the only time you're going to open it up is when they're having activities. And people come, you ought to let them know what the activities are going to be, and then they'll make sure that, and then they can be held responsible for whatever go on during that time. But I know it's about time, because I know you all building Henderson Park up because you're putting a whole lot of place, stuff for young people out there. And I'm thinking that you're planning on letting it stay, I say hopefully, stay forever, you know, but that's what I really want us to do, and that'll be, that'll be beneficial to a whole lot of people. And we have areas that we can put, we have an area where I can show you where you can put it at, whether to make it accessible to everybody. And we know that we're going to have to make it a handicap accessible, because everything you build now, you have to make it handicap accessible. So, is there any questions, comments that you need to ask of me?
I don't think so. I think the manager may have an update on his city manager's report on that issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Barbara, let me just say this much. When you were saying that you hope that it remains a park, it is a perpetual park, so it will be there, okay?
Okay.
It's not going anywhere.
Okay, so I'm looking forward to us having a permanent bathroom there.
Yes, right.
But keep the porta potters, you know, for those who are going to play on the cement and stuff, and playing in that area during the fitness trip. But we do, I do see a need for a permanent bathroom. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board, next to the consent agenda, what is the pleasure of the Board on items five through sixteen?
Mayor, will I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number seventeen. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance to amend sections fifteen, four sixty-two, fifteen, four sixty-three, fifteen, four sixty-five, fifteen, four sixty-six, fifteen, four sixty-seven, fifteen, four ninety-three, and fifteen, four ninety-four of appendix A of the land use ordinance. Ms. Ruth.
All right. We still warming up our presentation deck?
Yeah, Colleen, none of the screens are working.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay.
I can get my notes and probably roll without it, or we can pause.
We'll have to wing it old school style, so. Unfortunately, the public won't be able to see it, but we do have it on urgent, I believe.
That's what we do. We pivot in local government, right?
That's right, every day.
Okay. Sure. Okay, so this evening, our first, we have two text amendments to present to you this evening. The first one is a collection of seven sections of the ordinance. They are all tied together with a common theme of they deal with our overlay districts. This public hearing, or this text amendment package, was recommended by our legal counsel for some cleanups and some clarification. And what it's going to do is do three separate things. The first one is modernize the ordinance to convert height calculations from stories to feet, right? So, we have a number of overlay districts that are not written in the same language as the rest of our ordinance, and stories can be anywhere between ten and fourteen feet, and there's no definition of a story, so that's a little confusing, and we wanted to tighten that up. And so, by doing this, it's going to match the unit of measurements in section fifteen dash one eight nine, which is where all of our other heights are listed for all the underlaying zoning districts, or the regular zoning districts that are not overlays. The second thing it's going to do is establish on the Broad Street, Queen Street corridor district that the height limit is sixty feet. It does not specify in this overlay district. And so, adding this standard would be aligned with other commercial districts. And just for extreme clarity, the underlying zoning district of almost all of this overlay district is C three. That is also sixty feet. So, we are not changing the height, we're just clarifying in the overlay district. Far at the east end of this overlay district, there is a handful of properties that are zoned C four, but it's almost exclusively C three, so the overlay district and the underlying zoning district have the same height requirement. The third is it removes residential design elements from these overlay districts. In 2021, the state took away our ability to regulate design standards on residential structures. So, you'll see, if you looked at that red line version, the word "commercial" has been littered in there quite a bit. That is because those standards can now only apply to commercial buildings, not residential Alderman Prill had asked where this would apply when we were calling for the public hearing. This, we can't see it, but there is an outline in your packet, and I don't know if you can see on your screens where that Broad Street, Queen Street corridor district applies to. It's kind of the heart of the commercial area, of the Five Points area. And so, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend unanimously of the membership present that this be adopted and based it on consistency with not only city plans, but also with state law. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Board have questions? Hearing none, we will move on to the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak for against item number seventeen, please come forward at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a motion and a second, close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the Board on item number seventeen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to amend sections fifteen dash four six two, fifteen, four six three, fifteen, four six five, fifteen, four six six, fifteen, four six seven, fifteen, four ninety-three, and fifteen, four ninety-four of appendix A of the land use ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number eighteen. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to amend sections fifteen, four eight seven, establishment of greater Five Points redevelopment overlay district, promulgation of use and design standards of appendix A of the land use ordinance. Ms. Ruth.
Okay, thank you so much. This second text amendment comes, it was initiated by the Redevelopment Commission. They are asking for modifications to their overlay district that establishes them in section fifteen dash four eight seven. This is a pretty simple amendment. It has been reviewed twice by Planning and Zoning Board and twice by the RDC. The reason for that is, the original request was to allow the relaxed building lot standards that are allowed in R six within the redevelopment boundary to be in all of the districts if you're developing residential uses within their boundary. And when we started to apply this, we realized that RDC is impacted by a whole lot of other overlays, and we needed to find a mechanism of, well, what do we do when there's multiple overlays? Which one's going to guide it? And what we came up with was by saying the one with the overlay with the more specific standard would be the one that applied, and that's very common. And so, that's why this has kind of been modified twice. We have an illustration of where the RDC boundary is. Most of us are familiar with that. It goes from the south side of Riverside all the way down to Trent Court. And again, this was reviewed on May fifteenth and July seventeenth by the Planning and Zoning Board. They are recommending approval unanimously based on consistency with the city of New Bern adopted plans. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, and our RDC director is here as well.
Does the Board have questions for staff?
So, Ms. Ruth, so basically, what is happening here is that you're trying to get all of the area within redevelopment boundary areas zoned the same.
Not changing any zoning. What would change is that regardless of the zoning, if you want to build a house, you're going to be afforded the same benefit as if you were in R six, and be able to do it with smaller setbacks and smaller lots. And that's to encourage the redevelopment of those small lots in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, this time I'll open a public hearing. We are on item number eighteen. Have anything you'd like to say or ask a question, please come forward now.
Okay, as I understood it, the greater Five Point area, I know it was the area up there mostly in Broad Street, but now you're saying you're going to extend it to Riverside?
This is two different borders. So, the last item was the Broad Street corridor. This is considered the greater Five Points overlay district, so it's two different ones. Is that right, Ms. Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, I know what they said, and we want to amend it, so I was thinking that they was trying to extend it. All right, there.
Anyone else?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the Board on item number eighteen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to amend section fifteen dash four eight seven, establishment of greater Five Points redevelopment overlay district, promulgation of use and design standards of appendix A of the land use ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal? I'm sorry, Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number nineteen. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex twenty-nine sixty Old Airport Road, parcel ID number seven one zero five one zero 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 two. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Saint Bartholomew's Anglican Catholic Church has made a request to annex their two point eight six acre partial. We ask that you conduct a public hearing and then consider this request.
Does the Board have any questions for staff before we open a public hearing? Hearing none, we will now open the public hearing on item number nineteen. If you have any questions or comments, please come forward at this time.
Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion to close the public hearing and as well as a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the Board for item number eighteen? I'm sorry, number nineteen.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to consider adopting an ordinance to annex twenty-nine sixty Old Airport Road, PID seven dash one zero five dash one zero 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 two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty. Conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex four three nine Riverside Drive, parcel ID two zero three seven zero seven eight. Mr. Hughes.
David Greenberg has made a request to annex his point three eight acre partial. After conducting the public hearing, you're asked to consider this request.
Does the Board have questions for staff? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing on item number twenty. If anyone would like to come forward, please do so at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the Board on item number twenty?
Mayor, make a motion to conduct, I'm sorry, number twenty, make a motion to conduct the public hearing, consider adopting an ordinance to annex four thirty-nine Riverside Drive, parcel ID two zero three seven zero seventy-eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Turner, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-one. Consider adopting a resolution approving the community development block grant, also known as CDBG, for FY twenty twenty-five, their annual action plan. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you again. And this is a request to adopt our annual action plan. As you recall, at our last meeting in July, we held a public hearing on the plan. The plan went on display, and the thirty-day display period ended yesterday. We only received one comment on the plan, and that was during public comment at the meeting. The budget summary that was shared and detailed for you and the programs at the last meeting has not changed, and so, we are asking you this evening to consider adopting a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Does the Board have questions for staff?
There's no questions back, Board? Make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant, using your twenty twenty-five annual action plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number twenty-two. Consider adopting a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with the Craven County, with Craven County to utilize fifty-three oh seven FTA funding to support the MPO operations. Ms. Ruth.
Hi, good evening. And the funding of the MPO is, what the MPO does is, we are the long-range regional transportation planning for all modes within the larger New Bern area, so we include not just the city of New Bern, but we also have Bridgeton, Trent Woods, Riverbend, and portions of Craven County. Planning, excuse me, for the deurbanization of the New Bern area resulted in the loss of section fifty-three oh three funding, which is transit planning that the MPO receives. The MPO was funded by two grants, and that's P O one oh four, which makes up about seventy-five percent of our funds, with the remaining twenty-five percent coming from section fifty-three oh three. With the loss of deurbanization, we are now losing section fifty-three oh three funding beginning next fiscal year. In partnership with CARTS, which is Craven area rural transit system, as an urbanized system to provide transit, they receive section fifty-three oh seven. Right now, they have a large unobligated balance of about two point nine million dollars. That funding can only be used in the urbanized area with a focus on providing anything related to transit. So, that would be transit planning, also transit operations and capital projects, et cetera. In speaking with them, they use about five hundred thousand annually for their operations. What's unique about fifty-three oh seven is you can only encumber funds for the year of operations, one year at a time, but for your planning purposes, you can encumber them for longer periods of time, for as long as you might need those funds. So, out of that two point nine million dollars, CARTS needs about two million to get them through the four fiscal years that are remaining before that funding lapses. And in talking with them, we are, the MPO would like to partner with CARTS to be a subrecipient of section fifty-three oh seven funding that would allow us to continue operations through fiscal year thirty-four. That would get us through the next census, the census, twenty thirty census results of urbanization status that are normally released December of, December of thirty thirty-two, and that would allow us potentially funding to fund up operations in fiscal year thirty-four. So, section fifty-three oh three of funding is available through the county. The only difference between fifty-three oh three and fifty-three oh seven is it does require an increased ten percent match. So, currently, with fifty-three oh three funding, all of our member agencies pay ten percent. With fifty-three oh seven, it would now become twenty percent. The goal is to execute an agreement by October of this year so that we are positioned to apply for federal grant funding in January of next year. This agreement has been presented to the Craven County Commissioners, and it has been approved. And just to give you an idea, in your packet, there's a chart of funding to show the percent change. Using FY twenty-six budget numbers, you can see that New Bern's current allocation of ten percent is roughly forty-three hundred. If we move to section fifty-three oh seven, the allocation would now go to eighty-seven hundred, and that's just for replacing of the fifty-three oh three to fifty-three oh seven. Totally, you can, total match with both funds, you can see that the change remains at that forty-three hundred dollar difference. So, the request this evening is to consider the memorandum of agreement with Craven County to allow us, the MPO, to be subrecipients of that federal funding and take advantage of funding for the long-term operations into the next urbanization census. Happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions? What's the pleasure of the Board on item number twenty-two?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with Craven County to utilize five three oh seven FTA funding to support the MPO operations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-three. Consider adopting a resolution to certify a choice neighborhoods partnership with the Housing Authority for the city of New Bern. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, at the last meeting, Reginald Barner with the Housing Authority made a presentation on the Choice Neighborhood Initiative and the grant process and a potential partnership with the city to apply for that grant. During that conversation, questions came up about a proposed advisory committee, and this was tabled to give time for staff from both agencies to answer some questions. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Reginald Barner to come up and give a discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you this evening. As Foster indicated, we went back from the last discussion, had some internal discussions with our consultants, as well as both attorneys for the city and the Housing Authority. Some of the pointed questions that were raised to us, we were able to address as it relates to, was it a requirement at that time for us to have the implementation committee? The answer to that question was, no, not at this time. HUD will determine, once an award is given, they'll determine what those requirements are. So, the new modified resolution that you all have before you this evening addresses all of those concerns that were brought up during that discussion. Mayor, if any of you, you other Aldermen have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think we cleaned it out to meet the requirements that, of the concerns that were raised.
Does the Board have any questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the Board for item number twenty-three?
Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution to certify a choice neighborhoods partnership with the Housing Authority of the city of New Bern.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-four. Consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of eleven ten Mechanic Street. Mr. Hughes.
After receiving a bid in the amount of six thousand dollars from Brandon Rutledge for the purchase of this parcel, we received, the bid was advertised, no upset bids were received. This parcel is a point one one four acre residential tract with a tax value of six thousand dollars. It was acquired by the city and county in June of twenty nineteen through tax foreclosure. If the property is sold for this amount, the city will receive one thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars sixty-three cents, and the county will receive four thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents from the proceeds.
Does the Board have questions?
If there's no questions, Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of eleven ten Mechanic Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? For music. Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number twenty-five. Consider adopting a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of ten thirty-seven Main Street. Mr. Huff.
Good evening, Mayor, Board.
Good evening.
The Redevelopment Commission received a request to purchase ten thirty-seven Main Street from Mr. Chester Freeman. After reviewing the request, the purchase price was four thousand fifty dollars, which is seventy-five percent of the tax assessed value. The Redevelopment Commission passed that resolution unanimously, and we ask you to approve the sale of this parcel.
Okay, does the Board have questions?
You want to build a house?
No, the parcel is adjacent to his current property. It'll extend his front yard.
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of ten thirty-seven Main Street?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number twenty-six. Acceptance of Tax Collector's Annual Settlement for Tax Year twenty twenty-four. Ms. Ostrom.
Good evening, board. Restorant General Statute twenty five best three seven three. Requires the tax collector's annual statement settlement of taxes from government body reflecting total letting releases warehouse of liquidated. The Craven County. It's okay. The Craven County Tax Collector has provided two thousand twenty-four tax settlement according to ninety-nine point three eleven percent level collection rate and a ninety-nine point ninety-five percent collection rate for the municipal service district. It is requested the board make a motion to accept this settlement, which will be entered into the minutes.
Is board have questions? What's the pleasure of the board on item number twenty-six?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept Tax Collector's annual statement for tax year two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item number twenty-seven. Consider adopting an ordinance to amend the roadway improvements project fund. Ms. Ostrom.
This ordinance implements the roadway improvement project fund by eight hundred thousand dollars. The transfer of four hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to street division for the legislative and adaptive budget for this full year twenty-six and four hundred thousand dollars generated by grabbing the more vehicle will support the even thousand dollars for the roadway improvement project.
Board have questions? Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to amend the roadway improvement project fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yeah.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number twenty-eight. Consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Ms. Ostrom.
This amendment adjusts the budget to appropriate thirty-eight thousand from fund balance for the police department's annual radio system maintenance contract and the eleven thousand for fire department's portion of that contract. It also supports fifty-three thousand from fund balance for IT service maintenance contracts that originally did include the new budget.
Board have questions? What's the fifty-three thousand dollars for, or what kind of IT services is that?
The fifty-three thousand consisted of some IT restricted things for police departments, desktops and portals, and water, electric.
Looks like it's maintenance contracts from Munis, Think Guard, Duo, Microsoft, V N A, Cisco, and a firewall. So it's all software, maintenance contracts.
Make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-nine, appointments. Are there any appointments tonight?
Mayor, if I could jump in just real quick. I know Alderman, Alderman Royal had a couple of residents that she wanted to present to the board in consideration for appointment to the Redevelopment Commission. She's, due to a death in the family, she's not here this evening. And she just asked if the board might be willing to hold off on any appointments to the Redevelopment Commission to our next meeting, where she will then discuss the candidates that she would be interested in submitting to the board.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
If it's your motion, I second it.
Yes, I'll make that your motion.
So we, we're going to make a motion to table the appointments to the Redevelopment Commission to the next meeting?
To the next meeting, yes.
You good with that?
I'm good.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other appointments other than the Redevelopment Commission that anyone has? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number thirty, attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Got several things to update you on. First thing I'll give you an update on is Henderson Park and restroom. So we have been working on the restroom for quite a while. I'm happy to let you know that we have received the building permits. We have had the design approved for, to be in flood zone. So we anticipate the foundation being poured within the next two weeks, and the restroom slash concession stand construction will be starting. The location for that is going to be over near the existing basketball court. That's the most reasonable area to put that. We are also waiting for new ball field lights to be installed for the football slash soccer field. And so you'll see some additional work over there throughout the fall. So we have done quite a lot of work over Henderson Park, and I think with the restrooms and then the, the multipurpose field out there being completed, you'll see a very nice park out there. I was hoping to, to talk in a positive manner about our PEC channel. Unfortunately, we did have a glitch tonight. Staff has been working on, on, on the testing for this for the last two weeks, and literally up until this meeting started, things were working well. But what I can say is on our Roku channel, a city website, Facebook Live, that is being broadcast in high definition. It's still being broadcast in standard definition on cable TV. So we look forward to getting this little issue addressed. Also, just want to let you know that it is official. Early voting will be at the Stanley White Recreation Center starting September eighteenth. In the event of a runoff, early voting begins on October sixteenth. You've got a flyer in front of you regarding the bond referendum drop-in meetings. Our, our second meeting will be on Wednesday, August thirteenth, from four to seven at the Duburna Country Club. Staff will be there for those hours, happy to talk to any citizens about any questions they may have regarding the bond referendum. Then we will have one on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, from four to seven P M. at the Pleasant Hill Community Center. Then we'll have one on Wednesday, September tenth, from four to seven at the Stanley White Recreation Center. And our last meeting will be on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, from four to seven at the New Bern Mall. If anyone would like any information on the bond referendum, of course, you'd call us at City Hall, or you can go online at newbernnc.gov. Just enter bond referendum, and a great wealth of information will pop up on there. On your packet, you also have some information about the twenty twenty-four annual police department report that was recently released, and it's available on the police department site at newbernnc.gov. Chief Gallagher will be here at the next meeting to give you a brief update on that annual report. And wanted to give you an update on some upcoming events. Magic Midways returns to New Bern on Friday, August twenty-second through September seventh at Lawson Creek Park. The M S Bike Ride will be here on September sixth and seventh. Going to have quite a few riders this year, so we're looking forward to that event. Labor Day is Monday, September first. City offices will be closed. Our final concert of the season will be, for Footin' Loose on the Noose, will be on Friday, August twenty-ninth with the Revon Experience. This year, we broke attendance records three separate times. Our first one was with Trial by Fire, and that attendance was fifty-one hundred. Then we broke it again with Tell Me Lies, which is a Fleetwood Mac tribute band. Attendance there was fifty-nine hundred. And we looked today to see what the attendance was at this last concert, which was an Eagles tribute band, and it was sixty-seven hundred attending that concert. So we're really excited about how that concert series has really transformed over the last several years. Also, want to let you know that today's rain that we had just a few hours ago in, in several areas of the city, we, we got up to two inches of rain in a very quick period of time. So we did see a lot of flooding in some low lying areas. That water did drain out. We did have some cars stalling in certain areas, but, but all things are clear now. And we are, we are monitoring Tropical Storm Erin, and so we'll be paying attention to that over the next several days to see if, if there are any issues with that. That's all we have tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the manager? All right, new business, Alderman Pril.
Nothing to say, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Nothing to say, Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey?
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, if, is Mr. Childs here? I mean, George Childs, he's not?
He is not.
Okay. Maybe I'll direct it to you, Mr. Hughes. I would like for you, if you can give, and I want to put you on the spot, but that's why I thought Mr. Childs was going to be here. But is there any way that you can give an update to the citizens? And I'm referencing Lake Tyler with the roads for as a paving of the road of the area that's already built out? Is there?
Yes, ma'am. So public court staff has been talking to the developer. They actually contracted the developer, is, is looking to engage to pave those roads. They haven't, the city has not taken ownership of those roads yet. So it's really up to that developer to make sure that is done. We don't have a timeframe for when that's going to take place, but the goal is to not accept those roads until they're up to standards. So staff has been working with that developer for a while.
So it does seem promising that it should be coming soon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. And that was it, that's all we have, sir.
Okay. Only thing I'd like to just announce is I found out today that on August the twenty-eighth, the new health clinic that's located near Stanley White, operated by Carolina East, will be open and start to see patients. More information will be forthcoming, but they have hired a permanent provider that will be starting in October. That will be manning that facility. Do we need a closed session?
No, sir.
If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stand up.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.